Okay, seven o'clock. It's the appropriate time. All right, so what I'd like to do is first welcome everybody here this evening. Appreciate you coming in. Now I'm going to call a regular town council meeting of Monday, August 15, 2022, to order at 7:00 PM. If we could all please stand and salute the flag, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in accordance to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section -- wait a minute. First of all, before I finish, I want to thank Counselor Smith for letting me use her cheater so I could see what I was reading. Section 30, please note that tonight's meeting is being both audio and video recorded. If anyone else present is recording the meeting, please identify yourselves for the audience. I need to state your name and --
Jonathan Garretson.
From the reminder, right. Anyone else?
Uh, just on --
No, I was Abby West Springfield Record. All right, appreciate it, thank you. All right, Kate, will you take a roll call for us?
Absolutely. Counselor Laflambeau?
Here.
Counselor Griffin?
Here.
Counselor O'Brien?
Here.
Counselor Eager?
Here.
Vice President Clune?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Powers? Counselor DiStefano?
Here.
President Sullivan?
Here, thank you. Okay, eight of us present, we have a quorum. Approval of the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as posted. Do I hear a second? I'll move, I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor to approve the agenda, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes, it's unanimous, thank you. Okay, public hearings. Counselor Griffin, you want to move a couple for us?
Move to open the public hearing on the proposed utility petition filed by EverSource Energy for utility pole location replacement on Memorial Ave.
Second.
Moving seconded for the discussion on the, or where's our areas?
Mr. Fuller's here, yeah.
Good evening. So before you, we have a petition to move some infrastructure in and along the Memorial Ave DOT project. Start on the Agawam side, and we'll work our way from there towards the far end of the eastern states. First couple of locations are utility pole relocations. This is pole 204 over 59. The utility pole and its corresponding stub pole are slated to move 50 feet to the east. Along with that, the stub pole will get a brand-new guy wire off the backside of it. It will have a sidewalk bar to mitigate any safety concerns for pedestrian foot traffic. From the newly set stub pole, we will have a pair of conduits attached to that pole that will traverse approximately 50 feet to the west to the existing pole location, where we plan to install a ground-level manhole. Purpose of that will be to install new wire from the relocated poles to refeed the club fitness service. Sheet 608-372 with locations in front of Central Chevrolet. From the existing manhole, nomenclated 204 over 20U. Along the CSX side of Memorial Ave, there are two 5-inch conduits to be encased in concrete to traverse 251 feet from the existing location, as shown to a brand-new manhole, nomenclated 204 over 19U. This will carry two 5-inch conduits from the newly installed manhole across Memorial Ave to the relocated riser pole 204 over 31. Along from the intersection of Lowell Street to Spartan Auto Care, there are six poles shown on this plan that are all slated for relocation within 6 to 8 feet of their existing locations. The relocations on the plans before you are solely to accommodate the DOT's road widening streetscape project. I'm happy to entertain any questions if you have them.
Anyone in the public have any questions?
What's that? Road widening, streetscape, what have you? Yeah, as I understand, the road edges are going to move in some points. We're moving our infrastructure in kind to make room for that change in the road course.
If you're going to speak, we kind of need you to --
Oh, sure, come on up.
I'm just wondering if, do I need to say my name?
That'd be great.
Jonathan Garretson, I'm from Chickapi, and also the newspaper, The Reminder. My question is, when you say road widening, does this have to do with the DOT's, their complete streets project?
I'm not sure what the complete streets project are, but the DOT has an active project in West Springfield on Memorial Ave. The project number for reference for the DOT is 608-372. They are doing roadwork from one end to the other. Sorry.
Okay, anyone else? Counselors? Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Moving seconded, discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes, the public hearing is officially closed. Counselor Griffin, do we have another one in front of us? Another utility?
Thank you.
Move to open the public hearing on the proposed utility petition filed by EverSource Gas for gas main replacement on Prospect Ave, Highland Ave, Whitney Ave, and Grasso Ave.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded, the public hearing is open. Do we have anyone here from EverSource, from the utility, to address this? Is Connor here? Maybe you could enlighten the public or see if the, bring forward any issues you might have.
Connor Knightley, West Springfield Town Engineer. The plan as submitted to the town is, for the most part, agreeable. The engineering department and the Department of Public Works has two minor concerns with the work. One of the concerns is the plan does show a little bit of work alongside the street curb line, so I was just hoping that we could have some assurance through the permitting program that if they do work that requires a removal of the curb, that EverSource will be responsible for resetting the curb to town standards. And the second concern was with the crossing from Prospect Ave onto Grasso Ave. The plans show it zigzag across over our drainage line twice and then across the entire length of the road. It's my suggestion that instead if possible, they do a direct crossover to Grasso Ave, thereby not needing to cross over our drainage line, and would be a little less invasive to the paved surface. But other than those two concerns, the DPW and Engineering Department has no objection to that petition.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience have any questions? Counselors? Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moving seconded, motion on the floor, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes, public hearing is closed. Okay, Counselor DiStefano?
Move to open the public hearing on the proposed general ordinance amendment to Section 25-12 to create a marijuana community impact fees revolving fund.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving seconded, okay, the public hearing is open. Anyone in the public want to address the counsel specific to this public hearing? Okay, seeing, oh, is that Linda Parent?
Linda Parent, Belmont Avenue. At the last meeting, I believe President Sullivan, you proposed that the money from cannabis goes to the Care Coalition. Is that what this revolving account will do?
No, it would actually be operated and administered by the Board of Health, and that's in the proposed ordinance. Some money would, they would, it would be directed to different avenues, but it would be, the Board of Health would administer the funds.
But that's not what was proposed at the last meeting, correct?
No, that was, that's what the proposed ordinance was. The Care Coalition would reap some of the benefit of those dollars, that's correct, but it would be administered by the Board of Health.
But at the last meeting, you stated that all the money would go to the Care Coalition. I just want to be clear on that because I sat here and heard you say it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the public hearing is closed. Counselor Eager, you have a few for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Move to open the public hearing on the proposed amendment to the Traffic Rules and Orders Section 200, I mean, sorry, 406-63, establishing a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, HCVE, on Eldridge Avenue and Kings Highway.
Second.
Okay, we have a public hearing open on this issue. Anyone in the public like to please come to the microphone, state your name, address?
Joe Esley, I own property on Eldridge. It's actually a parking lot for an apartment building that I have. I appreciate all the efforts to try to reduce some of the issues that are on Eldridge, but I think the only way to eliminate them, if we made that a dead end, it would solve three things, that truck traffic, speeding, and then the drug sales that we have on there. We have a lot of the cars that pull in, do their drug sales, and they can get out to Riverdale quickly. So if that were closed off, nobody's going to want to go in there and get boxed in. Now, the proposal to go ahead and limit truck traffic, who's going to enforce that? Nobody's enforcing the one-way as it is. So it's just, just a suggestion, maybe we could take a look at closing that off if you go to the end of it. It's not really a through street, takes 90-degree left into Belize Honda's parking lot. So it really isn't even really a through road, but just a suggestion, I just wanted to voice that.
Appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Melissa Hansen, Beauvieu Terrace. I want to just say that I do definitely second what Joe says, there really is a lot of drug activity that goes on there, and the quick in and out would be stopped by doing a one-way, by having a dead end, excuse me. I didn't know that it was one-way, so if it is, I haven't seen a sign posted. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Someone else had their hand up?
I'm Tony Bunn, I'm here representing Belize Honda, and we're in support of the residents on Eldridge Avenue. We were at, for a large part, we were one of the reasons for why there was some traffic in along that road. We've tried to reduce that as much as we possibly can by not having our delivery trucks use that road to come into our, our business. Obviously, we don't have control over some of the larger trucks, say from FedEx or UPS. I think the idea that's suggested in closing off that street, because it does do a rather unique 90-degree turn basically onto our property, and then, I mean, we have no use for that road at all. I think that that would probably take care of quite a few of the issues that they have. The only thing that we would like to ask is that if there is an exclusion of heavy traffic on that road, the exit where it turns basically into our property going out onto Riverdale, we need to have access to that to be able to exit out onto Riverdale, so that's just all that we ask.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Cynthia Elderkin, Kings Highway. I agree with what they're trying to say about making Eldridge a dead-end street, definitely. But also, I want to address Kings Highway, the big trucks going by. When they hit a bump in the road, the pictures on my wall shake. The dog barks. The jake brakes are so loud. As a matter of fact, as you go down the hill, I live right across the street from the end of the cemetery, Beth Israel, and I'm going down the hill to the light. I've almost gotten creamed several times by people hitting me. It's ridiculous. The speeding has to be addressed as well as the trucks. I would like to have a couple of the little speed bumps put probably right on top of the hill or more towards where the cemetery is. As you know, there's been several accidents right in the cemetery of people hitting the fence, and two have been killed in the last two, three years, yeah. But the speeding is ridiculous. And where they put the speed sign, right near the fire station for 30 miles an hour, that's ridiculous. They should have put it like more in the middle towards where the cemetery is, and then you'd get an actual reading of how many people are speeding. But just give us some thought.
Absolutely, appreciate it.
It's getting to be a very dangerous road.
Carol Smith, 644 Kings Highway, right at the intersection, and I'm telling you, I might just as well be at the Indianapolis 500 with the trucks speeding, and it's very dangerous because we have a lot of children there. There, you see the ball? See the kid go after the ball? And this goes around 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's truck after truck after truck hauling. And I know, I know they're trying to make it, make their business, I get that. But give us a break. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll have these concerns forwarded to the council's Traffic and Safety Committee. Anyone else? Oh.
James Martin, whoops, excuse me. I moved to this town in 1972, and at the beginning of the Kings Highway, there was a approximately three-feet-by-two-foot sign that started and was in metal, and it said, "No heavy commercial vehicles allowed on this road." And that went on for a number of years. All of a sudden, one day, it disappeared, and the tractor-trailers have been coming ever since, and the road wasn't built for them. It was built for children, it was built, it was a residential neighborhood, you have a cemetery on the road, it just was not built for heavy trucks. That's what Route 20 was built for. So I was hoping in your wisdom that you would exclude heavy vehicles in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim. Anyone else?
Linda Parent, Belmont Avenue. I grew up between, on Piper Road, between Kings Highway and Amistown, and I just want to reiterate what Mr. Martin said, there was always a sign down by the white church that said, "No through trucks." One day, somebody just took it down, so I think you should just put it back up. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moving seconded, discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes, public hearing is closed. Counselor Eager, do you have another one?
Yes, we do. Move to open the public hearing on the proposed amendment to Traffic Rules and Orders, Section 400-11, to establish a no-parking zone on the northwest side of Colton Ave from Main Street to 8.225 feet northeast.
125 feet.
125 feet northeast.
Okay, do I hear it?
I'm sorry, just let's get, get there.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, public hearing's open. Anyone from the public like to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes, public hearing is closed, and Counselor Eager, you have one more for us, I believe.
Move to open the public hearing on the proposed amendment to Traffic Rules and Orders, Section 400-23B, to establish a commercial parking restriction on Main Street from Cottage Street to?
Colton Avenue.
Colton Avenue.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, public hearing's open. Anyone like to just please come up to the microphone? Come on up. Yep, it's you, yep.
Nikhilim, I have some concerns because I like to know what is the definition of "commercial vehicle"? Because I have tenants who have regular pickup trucks, and they have commercial plates, van have commercial plates, and they use them as everyday vehicles, and that's going to interfere if they cannot park on Main Street. So I'd like to know what is the definition of "commercial vehicle"?
Connor, do you have that for us?
In this case, "commercial vehicles" would be any vehicle that has a commercial plate on it, not necessarily heavy vehicles as earlier discussed, but any vehicle that has a mass DOT RMV designated commercial plate.
Okay, thank you, and the, let me see, when I just, when is the proposed ban on that, is it, we already, is that 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, or is this? Just so she has all the information.
I believe for this specific ordinance, it would be 24 hours, seven days a week, for the section of the street as described.
Okay, all right, thank you. You got a follow-up?
So this would create hardships for the everyday folks who, how would they go about doing the everyday things if this is a seven days a week, 24 hours a day? And also, if, let's say for the trucks, the delivery trucks, so when they deliver appliance, stove, washer and dryer, they would not have a place to go, to park. Sometime, the moving van, did you have, have to park on the street for half a day because, you know, tenants moving in and out, that's going to create hardship. It's like, you know, you're blocking people from going on to do the everyday things. So if you would consider that, you know, in your, your ordinance, as far as the prohibition, would really appreciate it, because this is really a hardship. It doesn't affect me, but would affect tenants who live there doing everyday things.
Okay, thank you. Counselor O'Brien?
Can we, I don't know where she lives.
Which street do you live in? Oh, you didn't give us your address.
Okay, my address is 659 Main Street.
Main Street.
Yes, which is right at the corner before Colton, right, and that intersection.
Okay.
So, I mean, you can move a little bit upward to cover just Boys and Girl Club.
Scope would be narrowed out of there.
Right, well, we appreciate your input, we'll, we'll certainly address something. We don't have to take action on that item this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Counselors DiStefano?
Just a point of inquiry, I, I don't know, Connor might not be able to speak to this, but in that particular area of town, I'm not sure of the zoning requirements, but wouldn't commercial vehicles already be restricted from parking in that area?
There's a restriction now, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, I believe that's town-wide. Connor, is that correct? Am I correct on that?
As I understand, that's, that's correct.
So there is a parking restriction in place now? Evidently, it's not enforced. Okay, thank you. Come on up.
I just want to add, Jonathan Garretson, Chickapi. In my previous career, I was a field service technician, assigned to a transit van, you know, to drive around in, which I was supposed to keep, you know, I would park it at my house every day, 24/7. Maybe I'm misunderstanding this ordinance, but that seems like anybody in that line of work would be disallowed from living on the street. So I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
All right, appreciate it, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right, moving seconded, we have a motion on the floor for the discussion? Okay.
We discuss it?
Yeah, absolutely.
So from what I understand?
Can you please turn on your microphone?
The scope, that exceeds the scope that I, I thought this was going to be limited to the area in front of the, the school. There was an area that was impacted by trucks parking, and it was stopping people from being able to pick their children up, things like that. I think that if it impacts, America's a unique area as far as its needs, and, and I think that, that this distance that we're referring to here exceeds the scope of what I was under the impression we were in. So if it's impacting this woman's ability to run her, her tenant, and as the gentleman said, people need that type of allowance to, to do their work, I was more under the impression it was from, say, Mosley Avenue to, at the, at the most Cottage Street, where there are a limited number of houses. That was my impression, and if, if it exceeds that, we should rethink it and narrow the scope of that ordinance.
Right, so the motion on the floor is to close a public hearing, but we do have that as an action item, which we can put off and send back to the Traffic and Safety Committee once we get to that. So any other discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counsel, Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes, public hearing is closed, thank you. Okay, now we go to public comment. Anybody in the public like to address the counsel? If you do, you're limited to five minutes, and you can't speak on a topic that the sub, that was the subject of a previous public hearing. Anyone in the public like to address the counsel on something new?
Yes, going back to Kings Highway, we gotta do something about the speeding.
No, 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 we, we close that public hearing, that's, that's, oh, okay, so this is different, we're going to exclude trucks, you're talking about speeding, okay, yep.
Yes, we need to do something. It's getting out of hand. I'll sit there in my driveway, and I'll hear motorcycles and cars, and they're going at least 55, some are probably even going faster. If someone was crossing the street, they'd be killed. And it's, it's not just coming up and down the hill, it's about the whole street. It's very, very dangerous. People are not paying attention anymore. It's like they just think, "Let's get there faster," or "I'm invincible." They don't realize they could be hurt seriously or hurt someone else as well. But we really need to do something about Kings Highway. Even down below the hill, going onto Elm Street, they're speeding so terribly and not paying any attention. I was -- I was in my kitchen, uh, this was during COVID where we're all on lockdown. I heard a car speeding down the street and he shot a gun right down the street. The officer came and he found two or three slugs. They were like aiming at the, as they started to go down the hill from the cemetery, I think it was three shots? At least, yeah. And it's just getting, it's getting horrible. I never see a, a police cruiser there. And I think if a police cruiser was either in the cemetery or on Chestnut Street, maybe if there was another cruiser halfway down, they could catch some of these people. But it's like people have no more common sense at all. They don't care. But we need to do something for the safety of the residents. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to, um, approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion to approve the regular and public hearing minutes of July 18th.
Move to approve the minutes of July 18th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, move to second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll go to vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. Appreciate that. It's unanimous. Communications, I won, but I'll entertain others from other counselors if they are so inclined. Nobody? No. All right, um, first of all, I want to thank everyone who, um, sent me emails on the, uh, putting the cannabis on the ballot. Um, I appreciate your reaching out to me. I do want to address one email, um, just for clarification purposes on reconsidering the vote. Did our due diligence, I just want to explain to everybody the, um, uh, the, um, council rules and then the state law that reinforces it. So I'm going to read it to you. In the, in the rules for a motion to reconsider, it's, uh, it reads, "A motion to reconsider any action taken by the council may be made only at the meeting such action was taken. Any counselor may move for immediate reconsideration or may even, uh, or may serve immediate notice that motion for reconsideration shall take place at the next regular meeting of the council, but it must be done during the meeting the action was taken. Vote for reconsideration shall be open for debate, which shall be limited to 20 minutes. A motion reconsidered requires a majority vote of the counselors present. Consideration may be moved by any counselor present." And that didn't happen. In addition to that, and just so, um, there's no misunderstanding, there's Massachusetts case law that suggests it would be illegal and not permissible for the council to waive its own rules at a subsequent meeting to reconsider a motion that had been finally acted upon. This is Coleman versus Lewison, 296, Mass. 210, 213. Reconsider at subsequent meeting was ruled invalid because of the failure at the prior meeting to take action to carry the question over to the next meeting. Also Kitty versus Springfield, 343. You can look these up. I'm giving you the number 343, Mass. dot 321, 1961. As responsible members of a municipal legislative body, their votes, votes must stand as cast unless duly and seasonably changed in accordance with applicable parliamentary principles during those meetings. Case law further suggests that councils may only waive their procedure rules as to the actively pending matters during those meetings. So the council can vote to suspend its rules, but it would not be permissible to do that after a matter has been acted on finally. These rules were not suspended when the initial votes were taken and prevailed, and then therefore the council cannot suspend its rules and retroactively revive the timeframe for a motion to reconsider. So this is, um, from the legal department. This is based on Massachusetts state case law, so I don't want there to be any misunderstanding in the public that this is something the council can do because this is something the council can certainly and most certainly not do, just so there's a clarification on that. Any other communication coming for the council? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move along. All right, new business. Unless there's any objection, the formal reading of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to amend Article 10, Chapter 300, Section 5, Table 5 dash 2, therefore entitled, Table of Use Regulations Business Owning Districts as it relates to central business district will be waived and the amendment shall be referred to the planning board and the ordinance and policy subcommittees to be taken up at their next regular meetings. Any objections to that? Okay, thank you. Move to waive the formal reading and approve the proposed warrant for the September 6, 2022 state, uh, primary as presented by the town clerk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to move to order the town clerk to conduct a special election on May and November 8, 2022, to be held concurrently with the state election on the same day. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And I do request that, Counselor, before you leave, well, actually, I'll pass it out now. As we go through this, each counselor could sign this and send it back. Might send it down the, well, I'll stick it down. Okay, Counselor Griffin?
Move to approve the, uh, proposed utility petition filed by EverSource Energy for utility pole relocation and replacement on Memorial Avenue.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Griffin, did your committee take any action on this?
Yes, unanimous affirmative.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Griffin, do you have another one for us?
Sure do. Thank you. Move to approve the proposed utility petition filed by EverSource Gas for gas main replacement on Prospect Ave, Highland Ave, Whitney Ave, and Grasso Ave.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Griffin, did your committee take a position?
Yes, we did. Uh, unanimous affirmative as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor DiStefano?
Just with that, there were conditions that the DPW requested be part of the motion to approve, so I would just ask that that be part of the motion to ensure that work gets done the way, um, Connor had, had requested.
Okay, so I'll propose an amendment to the, uh, original motion to, um, include as, um, conditions for approval, the, um, recommendations by the, um, town engineer. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so we have a proposed amendment to the motion. Any discussion on the proposed amendment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. Now we have to vote on the main amended motion. Any discussion on that? Okay, go to vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Counselor DiStefano?
Move to waive the formal reading and approve the proposed general ordinance amendment to Section 25 dash 12 to create a marijuana community impact fees revolving fund?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Counselor DiStefano, you reviewed this in your budget committee?
We did. The subcommittee voted unanimously, uh, in support of this. And if I may?
You may.
Just, I guess, a follow-up question. Something that came up in the course of discussion tonight during the public hearing, I can personally say I was a little bit unaware of in terms of what this particular adoption of the general ordinance would mean. I took the adoption of the general ordinance to mean that the council would have the authority, as it does in most of its appropriating powers, to decide where the money would go. I wasn't aware that this general ordinance would somehow, without any prior knowledge on our part, somehow vest total control of the appropriation of those funds to the Board of Health. Is that a misunderstanding or is that indeed the case that adoption of this general ordinance would result in? Because if it is, I, I'm not sure that that was explained to the budget subcommittee and I would take full fault for that because I myself was unaware of that.
Well, let me, let me see if I can clarify and based on, um, Linda Parent's comments. It was, there's, there's a couple of things here. First, the impact fees would go into the revolving fund. And then it is our hope and goal that when the council appropriates these dollars, it would also include the 3% taxation would also go into the revolving fund. That's the goal of the revolving fund. You need someone to administer the funds, but the, the, um, town council is the approving authority as far as the level of appropriation and that's voted on each year during the budget cycle. So, uh, we would have input on that, but we need someone to administer and doil out the funds. They wouldn't necessarily say, okay, I'm going to, you know, spend $20,000 for, um, you know, tobacco cessation or those sort of, I mean, you know, that wasn't the intent of the revolving fund, but the money has to be administered by someone. And it's my understanding that the department board committee agency officer authorized the spend would be approved. It would go through, has to go through somebody, so go through the health department because we, we wouldn't administer the funds, but they would be the administering authority. Question?
Or a follow-up comment, I guess. When the discussions kind of happened a couple of weeks ago about what different counselors maybe thought about what they would do with the funds should marijuana retail sales become legal in town, um, I was under the general impression that there would be subsequent discussions about how those dollars would be appropriated. I know that I'm personally not for, um, spending new money on new projects, states, towns, countries. They tend not to have revenue problems. They tend to have expenditure problems. And, and here we would be potentially taking new monies that could go to what I had thrown out informally once, maybe to offsetting what we know are going to be increasing water or sewer rates, but we're talking about potentially giving the Board of Health the authority to maybe use these new monies to supplement additional educational programs. And so if a yes vote tonight would somehow empower the Board of Health to spend monies, with obviously the council's approval by allotting them a certain budget, I wouldn't be in favor of that. I would, I would prefer that the, uh, impact fees, along with the tax dollars that would be generated from the retail sale of marijuana, go to the general fund and thereby be appropriated from there directly to whatever programs the council and mayor would, would deem fit. So I, I'm just a little concerned that by voting for this, I might somehow be taking away some of the authority that the council would normally have through its appropriating powers.
Well, of course, I think the opposite. Once the money goes into the general fund, then it's kind of lost. That's, is the way I look at it unless you get specific detail. And of course, we can't move the money around, only the mayor can. So if it was appropriated to the general fund and you want to use it for water or sewer, even though they have their own enterprise fund, but for your, by your example, I mean, then we would, I believe, lose some of our control over the money if it went into the general fund. I prefer it to be in the revolving fund designated for, you know, whether, you know, as Linda mentioned, the Care Coalition, which is I used during my speech, or, you know, messaging to prevent, uh, drug use and create better prevention. So, I mean, you can look at it either way. I, I, my intent was, when I proposed this, was not to have it go in the general fund because I, quite frankly, I think we would lose, lose it, lose sight of it, whether it's, you know, I'm not picking on the mayor, but it could be this mayor, it could be another mayor, say, well, I'm going to use that money. I need to, you know, I need to fix the pumping station, whatever, you know what I mean? So my concern was to keep it out of the general fund and to create a specific fund for, you know, what we're talking about. That was my intent.
Just one follow-up before other counselors chime in. So if I understand correctly, could the, if the council chose not to adopt this particular funding mechanism, the revolving fund, could we suggest another fund that it went into? It, could it go into the water and sewer fund?
The, the mayor is the appropriating authority. So once it gets in the general fund, he appropriates the money. We have no control out of that. All we can do is cut.
Well, he, he, right. He suggests how the money gets spent. The council could always choose to cut that amount of funding because we would know the dollars generated through impact fees and a 3% retail tax on marijuana sales. So is the only option either the general fund or this community impact revolving fund?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I believe.
Thank you.
Just a point of order, that's correct. There's no other fund it could be generated in. So it'd be this fund or the general fund. There's no other fund.
Thank you. Counselor Eager?
So, um, uh, Counselor DiStefano hits on a good point. While we, uh, we created, uh, this, um, this fund to segregate the, the, the revenue, we then handing, we're, we're voting to hand it off to unelected bureaucrats. And some of, a lot of the people on the health, um, uh, uh, board are good people, but at the same time, they don't go, they don't have to deal with the voters. Uh, at least if it goes to the general fund, you guys can reach out to us. As imperfect as it is, we can, uh, approve it more directly. Now granted, it will get intermingled and that's a bad thing. But I have a problem approving, uh, voting to approve spending for someone that's not elected. So I, I'm, I think I'm going to support Counselor DiStefano on this.
Counselor Eager, just as a point of information, we approve funding for non-elected officials to spend their money every year.
Correct, but we're, we're, we're setting this money aside in, for, for long-term. So all that money, it's a larger sum of money than we normally approve.
Counselor O'Brien?
I thought I heard in subcommittee that the, uh, the fund could only accept dollars that are fee-based and that tax dollars are, were questionable. We didn't have an answer on whether the tax dollars could go in there. And it was floated that we could simply appropriate then, we as the council could appropriate the money into the thing. I, I'm still left with an unanswered question as to, I understand fees, which will be very small compared to tax. So we have not had that answered. If I, that's what I thought I heard.
Right, the, you're correct, Counselor. The city solicitor, um, indicated she'd get back to us to ensure or tell us that we can't do that. Other discussion? Anyone? Counselor DiStefano?
So I?
Oh, Counselor Griffin?
I'm just going to lodge an objection to voting tonight until we get a
Okay.
Until we have an opportunity to vet this out, get these answers, if you don't mind.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I, I know you hate objections. Finally, we got a good one for you.
All right, Counselor Eager, you want to move some of these, uh, street restrictions for us?
Yeah.
Except for the last one, which I'll say right now, we're going to, I'll object to that one. It'll go back to traffic and safety relative to the parking on, um, Main Street.
I concur.
Just the first two.
Okay. Uh, move to waive the formal reading and approve the proposed amendment to the traffic rules and order section 400 dash 30, uh, 63, establishing a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Eldridge Ave and King's Highway.
Further discussion? Did your? Further discussion, did your committee take a position on this?
Yeah, we, we voted to support it.
Okay, great, any other discussion? Seeing done, we'll go to vote, Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
I vote yes, thank you. Counselor Eager, one more for us.
Before you go on, Counselor Sullivan, can I just ask a quick question on that?
Sure, absolutely.
Was it ever discussed in committee to make that a dead-end street at any particular point in time?
No, that would be a new item in front of the tray.
So it's never discussed?
Right, that would be.
So that'll be a new item to go on?
Right, correct, along with the speeding on King's Highway.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Eager, the next one.
Look, move to, uh, to waive the formal reading and approve the proposed amendment to the traffic rules and order section to establish a no parking zone on the northwest side of Colton Avenue from Main Street to a point one hundred twenty-five feet northeast.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, Counselor Eager, your committee take a position?
We voted to support.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, oh, Counselor O'Brien?
Are we moving that back to committee?
Uh, I think it was the next one, uh, Main Street?
They're both of them actually. This is the question that the resident had on parking, so they should not be moved forward, they should go back to committee and possibly shorten or at least run over again with her input.
Can you please turn on your microphone?
I think that both of these are what the, the resident was referring to, they, they, they should both go back to committee to be further vetted and possibly changed so that they're not impacting, you know, the residents, uh, as she was referring to.
Counselor Eager?
So, um, right now I'm reading H. I, the, the, the item she's, uh, was, uh, bringing to our attention was I, which is, um, related to commercial parking and the scope, as was pointed out, might be too large and we should refine that. So H is just to allow, uh, to ease parking for a student pickup mostly because this is over by the Hand and Charter School and the second part is I, which had objections, will be going back to subcommittee to limit the scope.
Counselor O'Brien?
I, I'm, I understand, I, I, I read this, but I don't understand why it extends, H extends all the way to Colton Avenue. If it's gonna have anything to do with the charter school, it should extend to Mosley Avenue, not Colton Avenue. Colton Avenue is way down the other end, it's, it's not in the impact zone that we, that's what I'm saying, this is not what we were talking about.
Okay, so.
This is the line item that the woman came here to talk about was line H.
All right, so what I'm gonna do is we're gonna take no action on this, I'll object to it, we're gonna send them both back to committee so we can bring them back at the next meeting. Just so we can alleviate any and all confusion. All right, Counselor Smith, you want to take the next one unless Vice President Clune does?
I think Vice President Clune would be happy to.
All right, there you go.
Move to approve the appointment of Natalie Updegrove Partridge, the Board of Health, with a term beginning August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any other discussion on the motion? How did the committee vote?
Unanimous affirmative.
Beautiful, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one go to vote, Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
All right, vote yes. Welcome aboard, Mrs. Partridge. Counselor DiStefano?
Move to approve the proposed reserve for wage transfer of fifty-two thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and forty-four cents for the contract settlement of the United Municipal Employees of West Springfield.
Second.
Moved in seconded, further discussion, Counselor DiStefano, did you take a position on this in committee?
The budget subcommittee was unanimously in support of this.
Okay, great, anyone else, any other discussion among the councilors? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote, Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous, thank you. Um, before we adjourn, I do want to thank Counselor Smith again for his glasses, I might have to keep, very fashionable.
They look nice on you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, unanimous, thank you everyone, appreciate it, thank everybody for coming up.